No.
Who knew?
Let's stand for the pledge in a moment of silence, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, our home, and to the people with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Robbins.
Here.
Commissioner Rushton.
Present.
Commissioner Bailey.
Here.
Chairman Wessel.
Here.
Commissioner Sodis Little.
Here.
Commissioner Alguayer.
Here.
Commissioner Lautner.
Present.
We do not have approval of the agenda on the meeting, but the administrator has suggested that we might add a second item, which is a budget update, if everybody's in agreement with that.
This is the committee at home meeting, so we can do that.
If we have time.
If we have time, yeah, if we have time.
So we'll put that down as number two. Everybody okay with that? Deb?
Are there agendas up there? Because I don't see it.
One might be here.
Yeah, I thought I put one every table.
I think they were.
Pretty simple, Jeff.
Rick had mine.
I thought I put one every table.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to approve the amended agenda, please?
So move.
Support.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We have an agenda. Any public comment? Any Commissioner comment? The purpose of the meeting is discussion of the county administrative candidate interview process. Chet, you want to?
Yeah, we have some information for you. I think you want to come out there. And we started with a couple of you asked about do's and don'ts of interviewing. And I think it's mostly common sense, but this was a good document that Darcy, I'll tell you, was going to start the matter. Put together then, this could hold you.
Illegal.
There's a lot of lengthy articles, but I'm not sure if you all want to read those lengthy articles. So I thought this was a good chart that Darcy kind of touches on the major topics and then what's allowed or what's not allowed.
Yeah, this was put out by the Department of Opportunity Guidelines. Do you remember what you can and can't ask?
I didn't know what you did.
A lot of it, like Chet said, you might understand. But it also gives you some ideas of ways you can ask questions without posing them in a way that's legal. But that might help to get clarity on some of the issues you want to know. You can't ask when, what year you start working, but you can ask how long you've been with your former employer. Can you be timed on itself?
I tell you, most organizations get themselves in trouble with follow-up questions. Someone makes their comment or adds something, and then someone digs deeper and says inappropriate things. He starts, he or she starts off with their family, and then you ask them, well, how many kids you have, what age you desire there, and those are the kinds of things that get people in trouble. If they bring it up, it's perfectly fine. So it's always better to kind of be careful about those type of personal questions.
Patricia, you raised this question because you're going through the same thing for Networks Northwest. Does this answer your question?
It does, and it's similar to what they distributed.
Deb?
Thank you, Darcy.
I believe some of this information, some of the questions we cannot ask will be answered once we do background checks.
Yes.
So... And are those background checks made available to the commissioners?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so all of that information?
Yeah, you can.
Okay.
I assume you want to do pretty thorough background checks.
Yes.
And like I said, when I was hired, the sheriff assigned the detective to the backgrounds. She did a fairly written report that was given to all the commissioners. You may want to do that on two people or three. I mean, it's a fluid process, and we can talk about that step by step. But yes, you all will get a copy of the report. And that's where you may want to, if there's any issues or concerns that come up that are on the ad libbing legal, then that's when you may want to have that detective do a little research on that topic.
I would assume that our chairman will be on top of the issues during our questioning and will mitigate.
Maybe everybody can help with that, but yes.
Well, I have great faith in all of them to be that you're not going to go over that line.
Other questions? Thank you.
Right, and the next step, and let me, and once again, this is simply a draft to help him. It's not a test and stone. It's really going to change anything. What I did is I based on my experience, because I've acted as a, say, you're going to, as a consultant, I've had, I've helped a couple of schools that self-funded their superintendents, and then I've involved nonprofits, and I've been on both sides, on that side and this side, going through it. And then I also went through, I did some research on the process that you used last time, and I got a little one left on that process, so I kind of combined those. And then I took some, when I was going through leadership program, they had a list of 25 questions that most people applying for these type of jobs should be aware of. So I kind of combined those all into this, and I emailed this, and this is just a draft. But I think what would work well is I kind of broke it up into seven categories, actually six categories, because the chairman usually asks the beginning and the closing, which are kind of standard. So let me pass those out. And then also, as a help, you have seven in the first round, I'll call the first round of interviews. We came up with this rating sheet, and those are certainly for your usage, that asks your interviewing, sometimes you want to make notes, and you want to compare them, so this is kind of a rating system. So let me just pass these out, and then I can give a further update of what I'm thinking. And once again, this is just a draft. It can get the dialogue flowing. And you have to remember, if you're doing the first round, you really have 45 to 15 minutes per candidate, and so you're going to have a tough time asking more than three questions each, and depending on how verbal some of these people are. And some may be way too verbal. I've had a situation where you ask the candidate a question, and they speak for 20 minutes on first answer. Sometimes you lose people that way quickly.
I didn't know, Chad's answer.
Oh, well, what's interesting, if you read the research, most people make up their mind about a candidate in the first minute in a good or positive way. And most of the time, those feelings really don't change unless they really hit off to a bad start or an excellent start, where they say something inappropriate. We've looked at all the research, and that's why I think it's important that you, it's not the first round, because you're doing three in person and four in total, you definitely want to follow up and have that person in the room for the second round if they get the second round, if they aren't here for the first round, because they really, sometimes you pick things up on the body language, how they react, just a lot of things. And I would strongly recommend you do a second round interview, because sometimes you get candidates that are very good at answering questions, but when you have a further dialogue or ask them to follow up and explain some of their questions, there's no doubt between them. And sometimes you have people that maybe not do well the first round, but you bring them up for a second round, and then have more detailed explanations, and they may do better. So it's really, I've said it's happened both ways. I was helping, well, President Lee and Buckley, they asked me to help with the search of superintendent. And we had one candidate that did extremely well the first round. He was from the State Department of Michigan. He came back for the second round, and he gave almost the exact same answers. There was nothing below that. And we have one lady who, if you listen to her answers, they're very proper and correct. Last thing, she talked like a family girl the whole time. And if you just read a transcript of her answers, you have been impressed. But her mannerism, kind of the way she dressed, and she really, I hate to spirit like someone, but she turned like a family girl, and it knocked it out. She lost the board within the first couple of minutes. Very good answers, but just the way she interacted. So since there's seven of you, what probably would be helpful is I took questions, and I literally cut them off on a piece of paper, and tried to put them in six different categories. So obviously, the first one is the standard opening questions and ramp-up questions, which I think would be appropriate for Ty to do. But then I took the questions, and I tried to break them up into six categories, so each one of you would have a category. And if there's more questions, then you'll get to. But you can maybe ask them questions for the second round. So I broke them up into six categories: management style, board relationship, employee relationship, budget, background, leadership, and job effectiveness. And this one is two. And as you know, there's pretty few questions in each one of those. And I said, there's no way you're going to get through all of these, but we also could, you could provide some questions. But at least what happened the last time you went through this, and help me out, Melinda, because I was on the other side, but I checked the notes to you. Each board member was assigned a category, and then he or she could ask questions within that category. And I don't know how many questions, if there were, I didn't see the list, so I don't know. I just went from the notes in my rep. But obviously, you have way too many questions that you'll ever get to.
We never got to them all.
Okay, probably the same, same thing. And I think for the final interview, you allow, I think it was 90 minutes between. And then, this is what she, so I took those six categories, once again, management style, board relationships, employee, budget, leadership, and job effectiveness. And all seven of you have your names on here. So if you have seven candidates, you'll get seven of these sheets. You can take notes on them and compare it. Some people like to rank them after each candidate. Some people like to wait until they hear two or three of them to kind of do a comparison. I said, just use it in pencil, because when you get done, you may want to change it. And this is just a guide. There'll be little formal action taken, but if you add up your totals, and then we would combine all seven of your totals into one, and give an idea of where you stand among each other. And once again, this is a guide. You're not, I assume you're not going to go through it by points. You're going to have dialogue, because then they pick up something, and Patricia will come through from this, or vice versa. So this is just kind of guide for your own notes.
Yes, Commissioner Rushton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've gone through all the material that you provided for us, and thank you for doing that. But if you could, for us today, there's a reason you are asking these questions. You're trying to glean a certain amount of information from the candidate by the questions you ask.
In a short amount of time.
In a short amount of time, correct. So if you would go through each one of these seven categories and briefly describe for us what your question is looking for.
Or what categories we're looking for?
If we take a look at the first, the first sheet, the management style, what was?
We're still going to be opening one, right?
Pretty much.
Yeah, I mean, that's pretty standard.
That's pretty standard. You're basically going to allow the candidate to give a brief overview. And so when we're starting to dig down in so that we can learn a little bit more about the candidate, my question to you is, is what are we, or what were you trying to glean from the candidate by the questions that you presented to us today?
Very good. First of all, these six are not in any order.
Mm-hmm.
I just, that was, looking at it this way. So, but when you look at the management style, well, actually, I think the one that is, to me, most important is the board relationship and the employee relationship. Because if there's not trust between administrator and the board, you have a very intelligent individual who can be the best budget manager and best long-term planner, but if there's not a strong relationship between the board, it never will work.
You'll have to have a cohesive relationship. We understand that. But going back to my question, I would like you to take each one of these individuals.
So let me start with the board relationship, because in my opinion, that's the critical. If there's not a strong bond between the board and the administrator, it's not going to be successful for a lot of different reasons. You can have someone with great technical skills, but he or she has to work closely with the board. So if I had to rank these in orders, I would say this would be a critical one for the seven that people look at. So if you look at those questions, and once again, these are not in order, I literally cut them out, paste them together, but if you look from my perspective, if I was in your seat, I would look at board relationship as a very critical component. So if you look at that, obviously, the first one, establishing good working relationship with the board. And how would you do that? How would that person do that? And I think all of you agree, and I think I did the math, I think there's been 17 board members since I started here. But I think the key is, you have to have a good relationship, and there has to be trust between the board and the administrator. And I think the key actually is number two, the role of the county administrator, because some of you may have a different concept of what you expect that. So this really has to be a two-way dialogue at some point, probably not in the first round. The first round, you'd want them to kind of explain what they perceive their role being to the administrator. But it could be that this board has one perception, and next year's board could have a different perception. And I'll give you just an example. When I first came on, when I was school superintendent, and Ty can probably relate, at those four meetings, as a superintendent, I, it was assumed, it was assumption that the superintendent would make a recommendation on every single issue, and then the school board would react. When I first came here, I did it the first year or so. But then the board told me they don't want that, because they just want the facts, and that it's up to the seven of you. So I had to change my style based on who was on the board at that time. And it kind of evolved, so every two years, a different board, they have a different philosophy. And that's why there's usually a change in the administration. That's why both of them asked that long, because different board members may come on and have different feelings or different perceptions on what they want from the administrator. So if you look at that, I think that's a critical component. Opening means and wrapping shoes, that's more of a topical thing. I would not put that as a high priority. Anyone has to down the road. But in terms of first round, that's more of a topical thing. But I think that is important. It goes on there, because I know Commissioner Lautner remembers that the board was cited for violations from the previous administrator. There were some issues that you were not, several close sessions that he recommended were a close session, and they were sued, and they were not successful. So that may get issued out, we don't have a typical question.
With that said, in the contract for whoever we hire, can that not be part of the contract that every year that they attend some sort of training?
You could, that's up to the seven of you.
So that's something that can be mandated for your position.
Because of that, because of that incident or incidents, that's why prior to COVID, we had training here every year. Host department came in every year, most years it was pretty cool. I think every year it was pretty cool, actually, came in and gave a seminar on both those topics because of those problems. This is a critical one, I think, in excellent business. And you all know this, county government is a unique form of government. You have to balance it between board members, the elected officials, and the department heads. And some city managers who have become county administrators have had challenges with this, because in the city management structure, city manager pretty much has authority over every department. When the county government, that's not the case. I can advise elected officials when it comes to discipline and so forth. They have a final authority. And so that's a balancing act. But I think, once again, I would say that'd be one of the top questions. The next one, kind of the follow-up, asking to describe the situation, where they've had a successful or unsuccessful relationship for the board, and some background of how that happened. So a little bit kind of, I would say, secondary question. I think you'd want to, the last one, is keeping the board with praise on current events. That kind of ties into the personal and the relationship that you want. And sometimes they may talk about, now, some of these questions, they may actually address why you're interviewing. You may ask one question, and you may give two or three of them answered at the same time. So that's why it's important in my mind that you not pick exactly three questions to ask before the interview, because someone may come in, and you really want to ask these questions, but he or she may have answered them already in different questions, and that's why you have a lot more questions that you get to. But sometimes they combine answers into two or three questions and you want to answer.
Patricia?
I was, you know, I'll share what we did in the Networks Northwest, and then my colleagues can either say great ideas or not. But we did narrow it down to two questions, first interview, second interview. And we picked those things that, you know, as you were going through, Chet, you're talking about what's really important to pull out, the nub of their expertise or beliefs in a certain area. For instance, I would combine the first two questions. They are already getting at the same thing. But I agree, you know, the county is important. We just rotated questions to keep it from being not so boring. And there was a process statement at the beginning that said, you have X number of minutes, and we're going to ask you X number of questions. And it was a time management thing, to see how well people were able to manage their time. You know, some of the candidates rambled, and you knew right off that they didn't have particular skills that was going to serve them well. So that was kind of an interesting thing to do, but as I said, we just kind of, ahead of time, assumed, and then the person asked the question, but they could add it, they could ask it in their own way, being careful not to ask the wrong thing.
Well, that's why, oh, certainly, we have it screened here before we start interviewing, so all, and this is just a draft.
It's a good draft. It's a good draft.
And there's no one way to do it?
No, I'm just, I'm just wondering if we want to pare it down to a set number of questions that we know we want to get through, and then maybe some that we know go a little deeper, because you've got some excellent questions here when I was reading them at home.
But there's no way here to get through all those questions.
Oh, no, no. So why, what happened there?
So the candidates do know the timing that they have. But you're right, some people, you don't know a way that this is not correct.
But it does give you, if you're asking the same questions, it gives you an opportunity to see, to compare candidate one with candidate two, to see how they responded.
Commissioner Rushton?
Yes, I want to thank you for that, Patricia, because that's kind of what I was getting at when I was asking Chet the questions, to explain the questions to us, because how do our questions measure skills, abilities, personality, and so on and so forth? So I think it's critical, like you say, if we put a timeframe on it, and they go beyond that timeframe, or they don't answer the questions succinctly in the timeframe, then we know they've missed the mark as far as meeting the required deadline. That tells us a little bit about their thought processes and how they may perform here in certain situations. So that's the reason for my question, and having, you know, a lengthy dialogue as a group, so we can drill down and keep it simple, but drill down and get, you know, pose these questions in such a way that it gives us information about the candidate without asking certain questions directly. Does that make sense? Am I making sense?
No, yeah, absolutely. I'd be shocked if you get, if you sort of go 14 to 20 questions, you won't get past that the first round. There's no way. You may not. I say 14, I give you a chance to each of you to at least ask two questions.
We only did 20, you're right. And some answers would be, you know, and in the process statement of the beginning, a lady would say, you know, some questions you'll answer quickly, and others you're going to want to delve into more, you know. I just think this is how much time.
And like I said, sometimes he or she may answer two questions with one answer.
And then you skip it.
So that's why you're a little flexible, because.
And you skip it.
Yeah, and what's, would you know what I'd do is have that person answer a question, and then answer a follow-up question, then you still ask a follow-up question, because that kind of doesn't make you look probably good.
Win?
So I agree with all of this. Those are excellent, excellent points. And we were talking about the fourth question on the board relationships page. I would like to expand that a bit. A challenge for us this year has been a sense of teamwork on the total staff, especially between elected officials and employees, and there's been a lot of undercutting. So addressing that in a way, how do you? I'd like to say that has been an issue here, and I'm suggesting if you've dealt with, asking if you've dealt with something like that in the past, and/or how might you deal with that? Because that's going to be a real challenge for who's ever coming in.
If we have, we have seven categories of questions. If we give five minutes for the opening, we've got about five minutes for each category. So we're going to have to use that time wisely, and I think probably we need to all be sensitive to that. And what are the, what are the five minutes worth of questions in your category that are most critical? Yes, Deb?
I would request that the administrator complete the process that I asked him to go through.
Well, I think I covered board relationships. I'm not thinking of, probably, this may answer your question, but I'd say employee relationships are important, too, because there has to be that partnership, or just that partnership is going to work. And that's what I was trying to get through on these employee relationships. And that's always a fine line. When you look at these labor negotiations, first round, I don't think are that critical. Those are more technical issues, and then they do have, and it's always separate, and the clerk is, and we have less staff people, so on the union, and those kinds of stuff, I would kind of refer those to second level questions. Discipline, unfortunately, we've not had many of those, but at one time, there were a lot of disciplines here, and that's when legal issues challenged, and I think you'd want to focus on that. How they handle tough situations, what they learn from it, about standards, how you do the work together. When I came here, there's a lot of, like I said, dysfunction in the building, people not talking to each other for whatever reason. And we're so small, one of the things I had, all departments, you, one official's signed a standard of practice, I don't even remember that. But one of the things I put into it is, you will not be emailing each other. If an issue, talk to each other, you know, you got to get that relationship going there. And I think it's critical that the next, you know, to build that relationship. We have a very good department heads here in employees and local officials, but at times, they have not worked together to offer, and I think that's the key. So if you look at employee relationships, I would downgrade the ones on the labor negotiations. I think maybe when you get to your fire arrest, you want to have some, some experience there, because it does make a difference in setting that going. But outside of that, I don't think that's critical. I think giving feedback to the employees is important. We haven't had a lot of discipline achieved here, but I can tell you that we've had meaningful employees. meaningful employees, as recently as this morning, on a situation where sometimes, we just need to, now they're working before they form this, but this one this morning there was, or no, discipline action. We don't publicize those, but we have them. There's been a couple of them, and there's short time here. And the key is that it stays confidential, and because there hasn't been any lawsuits, which is good, that means we've had, we've followed the process completely. So I don't really want to do the employee relationships, but I think if you want to be touch-based with the candidates, and see what their past history, when you do the background search in the finals, I would really focus on this one. And I can tell you, a couple of times, I did the background search, a couple of times when I was involved, there always was a meeting, whoever was doing the background, or employees to talk privately to that person or team people. So when you do that background search, I think that's important. Also, I think it's important is, when you do the interviews, and I won't do it all them, but once you get to your time list, set aside an hour in open house where the employees come in and can meet the person, the person can do an overview, presentation, can answer questions very informally. Obviously, employees don't have the same time decision, but they may pick up something that you as the board do not. And then at least they'll feel like they're part of the process, and they would have opportunity to voice their opinions to the seventh. I think that's important, because sometimes, people can interview well with boards, but have issues with employees, employees may pick something up. I'll tell them, Patricia, yesterday, we were driving back from meeting about a situation that I want to mention, one of the local school districts here, where this person interviewed extremely well, the board was all set to give this person a job, superintendent. And they said, would you like to come to the school? At the end of the day, this person came, but it sounds like he was going through motions, and some employees said hi to him, and he kind of ignored them and so forth. And from the end of school day, the time the board met at seven, one of them was swamped with comments saying, this guy doesn't care about us, he's just here for the job. You know, a simple thing, just walking by and talking to the secretary, well, secretaries at schools, they have a lot of power, but who served that, the custodians, they all felt that he, he gave a impression, he was above them. So he interviewed well, the board was all set to give him a job. In between, let's say, four o'clock and six thirty, the morning running, and the board went through their offer because of that. That wouldn't have happened if they didn't provide that opportunity. And probably was a good choice, that they didn't. So come on, continue. Now we start from the beginning. Management style, this is more of a topical thing. I think you do learn from people in their past experience. I've always, it's interesting, that question about define integrity, or one time that your integrity was challenged. Some people just freeze up in that question. And some people are very open about some challenges that they face, and what they learned from it. Because everyone, David and Lewis are both, has had challenges, and had some tough decisions. And sometimes they're good, and sometimes they're bad, but what do you learn from that decision? You know, I had one person I interviewed, and said, my integrity is questioned every single day. But when I go home to bed, I look myself in the mirror, and I know I did the best I could. And I thought it was a great answer. I've asked some other people this question, of boards, and they, those people are critically gross. They didn't know how to answer. And I'm always worried about someone that says, well, I've never had my integrity challenged. Or, I've never had problems with employees. And that tells you something. So to me, that's a, you know, and if you're going to have open dialogue, people have to feel comfortable approaching that person. And you can usually pick up by the body language and the way they answer questions about that. But I think that's important, how approachfully they are, or open to suggestions, is it a top-down management style, or do you want people, people? And what motivates that person? Now, these are more kind of abstract things, but what motivates you, what makes you come to work here today? Because you can just sit in your office, it's very easily, I want you, one day, just go to the door and sit in my office all day. But that doesn't work very long. That would not work very long. And I, I'm one of our staff, I'm one of our past administrators, the biggest challenge employees had is that the door was shut, and that person was in trouble something. You know, so, you know, what motivates you? This is not a job where someone tells you, okay, today you've got to do this, this, and this. You have to be a self-starter. You have to create your own opportunities. You have to reach out to people. And people have to feel comfortable coming up to you, for like motivation reasons, where have you been challenged, what have you learned from it? Both pressure. So I try to kind of do kind of general, kind of management, I think some very important. And this is a side thing, but I'm always wary about people that say they work ten, twelve hours a day, every day. Not particularly, but I can tell you, other job I've had, some I most, let's say, ineffective people, people who can manage their time. And that's critical. If you can't manage your time, you're not going to get priorities done. You're always going to be reacting to something versus reacting. So to me, time management is an important one, very true. Board relationships we talked about, employee relationships, budget, that's a topical thing. Obviously, you don't have to be a budget expert, but you have to understand the process. You may not have a topical, everyday knowledge of what your house members and so forth. I was a member too worried about here, because we have people that view a topical thing. But the key is, they've got to see what they're pitching. You know, let's say there is a downturn, and you have to cut five percent. How do you do that? Do a fair across, or how to get everyone's input on that? So they have to have knowledge of budget. The merge question, that's more of a topical thing. I actually put that in there to see if people do the research, if they even know what murs are. Because if you look at our background, a lot of them have county government, but you wonder how much research. If anyone does research about county administrators and county boards, they would know what murs are. Sometimes you put a question in there just to see how much research they have done. I'd be wary about someone that did not know about what type of pension plan we have. Because it's, right now, you go on the website and find out a lot of information. But sometimes, you put those kind of questions in there to see how much research will be in it.
Exactly.
On it. With all this, okay, this is more a topical thing. If you put up the categories, I would say this is one of the world priorities, but you want them to have some basic background, questions, and some knowledge. But once again, they have to approach the finances. Leadership. I think you want someone that can display leadership, and has a full history of it. And so I try to draft some questions there that relate to that. You know, how would you involve, I think once more finishing, how would you involve county staff, because you have elected officials, residents, and, and evaluate programs? Because you've had a lot of input on different topics. Another example I think to that is the ARCA fund. I think the reason we're so far ahead of most counties, that we truly got people involved from the very beginning. You read today's record ego, they're going to go out with proposals fairly soon, and allow people to submit proposals. And I think the reason we're so far ahead is that we did that from the very beginning. So once again, you want someone that can work well with people. And even with, you know, we're suffering from some common shifts, but I can tell you, I get broker calls from township officials on a lot of topics. I think if there's a trust here, and if I can answer, we'll get someone to help me out. I got a call today from the township supervisor about how we do our Zoom meetings, because they're struggling with that. But you want to be relationship with those people, so they feel comfortable asking questions. So that's part of the leadership. It's interesting, kind of, the first question about the three, the fact that the leadership always, some people do extremely well there, and some people I've seen just freeze up on that. They just don't feel comfortable with that, or maybe they don't want anything. But that question kind of gets, a lot of times when you ask that question, they'll answer a couple of the questions at the same time. And then once again, there's kind of background on how do you work with people, with people, how do you get their insight? If you look at all the research on successful people, doesn't matter who's fielding them, there's three things that make them successful. They need to have some technical skills, they have some knowledge of what the job is. Two, they need to have a vision where they want to go forward, that goes with time management, management style, and so forth. But three is, they need to have good leadership skills, that includes communication and trust. Because if you get someone that may not have the background, but if he or she is trusted, the staff will work that person, they will be successful. On the flip side, if you have someone that has great technical skills and they have a great vision, but if he or she's not trusted, it's generally a disaster. And I think all of you can probably think of examples. I've been in that situation, a couple of times where people have great technical skills but no people skills. And this job is critical, you get a combination. And the staff here is very good. Someone may not have the grasp of county government, but they have good leadership, communication skills, and people trust them. Everyone here will help to be successful. But that's just kind of overview, and then job effectiveness. You want to somehow be able to put some tangibles on where that person was successful or not. So I came up with some questions here. Name one of your best accomplishments. And kind of explain about what they had, any obstacles, how they overcame them. Missing decisions they made, or the situation of what they were from. In this job, you can always come to a situation where a decision needs to be unpopular. And once again, how that person handled that, what they were from. So just kind of overview question. I don't want to speak out. But that kind of gives an overview of the character of the person.
Can I ask a question in regards to that last page? Question number one. Name one of the best accomplishments, including where the assignment came from. Why did you feel that that was important to that question?
Yeah, well, I think all the ones that you said have the leadership roles, you know, and give us an example. What's one, what's your option that you took on, that you followed up on, that you were instrumental in developing? You know, were they part of the team, were they leading the team? But there could be, it should be at least one or two things that everyone should be upon out, and some that they've done, and see that they really feel proud of. They could take, this is something that I accomplished. And once again, it goes back to that communication with the board. And by interviewing these people, you'll kind of get a sense on what type of style they have on the board members. Once again, these are kind of abstract issues. You can't say, okay, this is black and white. But, you know, give us an example. Tell us something that you really problem, that you did, and what made you do that, whatever the circumstances and the challenges.
Chet, one of the, one of the questions, the last question on the job effectiveness. How would you effectively keep the public and the media apprised of county issues? One of the strengths I think you brought is you're involved with the Polka Fest, and you're involved in all of the external groups, and the Rotary, and the Prospectors Club, and you work well with the media. And I think we need to make sure that whoever we get is able to represent the county out in the public. That's our job, but it's also the administrator's job, I think.
Well, I think our, I think that is important, because, actually, a lot of times, I learn more than just informal events. You never know, you can call someone, and someone's going to come up with a question, or someone that maybe they've instructed within the other. They, if, if they know you by a first name, or says, this is your job, then people feel more comfortable, they're going to interact with you. And so, if a township supervisor has a question, and he talked to me two weeks ago, he may feel, he or she may feel more comfortable calling and asking a question, which is just calling someone who's the county administrator. So I think in these leadership roles, or what they are, it's critical that people know who you are, feel comfortable. You publish your direct phone number, you don't have to go to the secretary. You should respond, email within twenty-four to forty hours, answer every phone call. Because I think that does trust. And the more trust you build, the less problems there are.
Did you get your question answered, Deb?
I did. And I find that the information you provided the board today was very valuable.
And once you, you could combine some of these, you could put them in a category. I want to give you something to start with. Like I said, like I said, fourteen to twenty, you'll, you won't get your twenty questions. I don't think you'll get to that many questions.
So if we can decide on maybe two or three questions, I mean, if we want to individually look at two to three questions, and I like the idea of a time limit for the candidate to answer those questions. And if we get through all the commissioners, we should be prepared to do a quick flash question and answer, maybe, at the end, so that we give them the amount of time that they need.
Well, there's two ways you can do it. You can assign each of you one of the categories and two questions, or you can pick a couple of questions in each category, and just go around and say each separate, I mean, there's all, there's all right around where to do it, just wherever you feel comfortable doing.
Either way, for me, it doesn't matter to me.
Would, would we be willing to identify a category for each commissioner, and then that commissioner would kind of combine the questions and be responsible for, for making sure that in five minutes or so, we got that category taken care of?
How many? That's our full time.
Gwen, Deb, and Patricia. Gwen?
Ask my question.
Oh, I don't know what your question is.
How much time per applicant do we have for questions? How much time?
How much time per applicant?
We have one hour between candidates. So on the twenty-nine, it's one, two, three, and four. You'll need a break between them, so at the most, you'll have fifteen minutes.
That one's key.
We're telling people approximately forty-five minutes, as you would.
Okay, okay.
So you start off the meeting saying, we have approximately twenty questions, and it's forty-five minute timeframe. And that's pretty standard with interviews, there you let them.
So it's not their time management, it's our time management.
With that?
Our time management. Well, that's...
But you, you would pick someone up, if someone gives you a long answer, knowing all these questions, that's something for you to consider, too. You have, and if someone just says yes, no, which I don't think it's set well, but that also gives you kind of feel.
Gwen?
I could go either way, but if we each take a section, I would really like employee relationships.
What, what are your wishes? Deb?
Patricia, I thought you had a question, or a statement?
I had Gwen ask it, that was how much time? That seemed relevant to anything more we said.
Maybe this will help, if you identify, as each of you identify one of those categories, and then all of you give feedback on questions within that category. So you may want to combine, because you may have some strong feelings about, you get one area where you may have some strong feeling about a question in a different area. So I'll kind of just, kind of identify the top questions in each area, based on what all of you are thinking.
You know, I kind of like the idea of going from commissioner to commissioner with different questions across the board. Here's why. Let's say I pick something in the management style, okay? And commissioners down the road have picked out two or three different questions from each category, and I ask two questions, but they didn't get their question answered. They could then opt to ask a question in that same category. Does that make sense? Am I making any sense?
Well, then you should.
Gwen says no.
You have to ask, you should ask the same questions every time.
Yes.
Yeah.
I think you're saying rotate, just, I ask a question, let, ask a question.
From any category.
Yeah, from any category, and just keep it rotating. I prefer that, too.
And I think that would tell us something about the candidate as well. You know, they've got one, if they pick up on, well, it's just going to be questions in this category as we move along. in this category as we move along. You know, by switching up the questions as we move along, they don't know what to expect, per se. I don't know, just a thought.
So restate again, because I'm not sure I understood what you were suggesting. Restate, you?
I think we should pick our questions, the most important questions that we feel that we can glean as much information from, and then have each candidate rotate with those questions.
Patricia?
Yeah, I agree. I would, you know, we could as a group pick the questions we think are most important to get the qualities we want. And then just assign, you know, you take this one, you take this one, you take this one. And just go straight through them.
One word of advice, and this usually for time management is on the other side, don't ask tons of follow-up questions, because you're not going to get time. You can, the second round, I should be doing the round that you have more time and more flexibility to do those in-depth things. This is kind of your first round, but if someone asks a question, then two, three of the follow-up questions, we assume you're not going to have time to get through even seven questions. And that's not the follow-up of the candidate, that's the follow-up of you.
I know, that's directed at me because I'm the.
No, that wasn't.
Because I'm the one that usually comes back. But I do like that, that we pick the questions, we stay as much on track as we can for a first round. For me, drilling down is a second interview. That's when we ask the relative questions more thoroughly, in my opinion.
The second interview, you don't want to rush through it. You set aside a two-hour period, for example. You know, so you have a chance to do the follow-up and the interaction and have more flexibility. Where this is more of a rigid process.
Where the process is a bit more comfortable between us and the candidate. You know, they come in the first time, they're, they don't know what to expect. We don't know what to expect.
If you don't make that bond the first round, you're not going to bring back the second round. Hope by the time you come back and have everyone in the second round, you really feel that these people truly have a legitimate chance. Because if they don't, if you don't feel, then don't bring them back in the second round.
Melinda, I saw your hand up.
Yes, thank you. If we have 45 minutes, I would say by the time we ask, I would just pick a couple of the opening questions, because I think they're going to have, give us the most information. So for example, we've looked at your background, what causes you to be interested in, are we supposed to read these publicly, because our people?
Well.
All right. So if we look at that first question.
I would suggest the person taking notes be very generic in the final.
Okay. So I was looking at the bullet point, first one, okay, that looks like a good one. And then maybe the third one, because the others kind of look like they're further down. We want the answers, but they're further down.
It's, I went back and read the notes from 2011, 2012. They were very generic minutes that did not include.
I would, I would think so.
The more mandatory questions and notes, I mean, they, they weren't so specific. I think that agreement.
All right. And then by the time that we do each ask a question, which is, so that's at least seven questions, and that's going to take a good amount of time. And, and then I still would get to the last two of these wrap-up questions if we could, because I think that's, that's the most relevant. So now you pick any, any one of these categories, and if it were my, so what we've done in the past is say, so you're our first candidate, would start on this end, and we would just go right down the line, so we've all had an opportunity to ask this person a question. Then, you know, the next time it was, or the next set of, we had time for a second set of questions, then it would start here and go down, so that we all had an opportunity to just make sure we, or if we got through it and somebody hasn't had time to ask a question, make sure they have a chance to ask a question. That's just how we've done it before. I, I think we can each pick, the problem is, in each of these categories, I see at least two questions I would like answered in each category, and sometimes four or five. We're just not going to get through those. So hopefully, and I didn't even start the ones that I thought were kind of repetitive and might be answered in a previous category. So we'll just have to do, you know, the best we can with the 45 minutes that we have, and then hopefully follow up with a couple of these. End up perhaps with what they really need to tell us.
Before we continue, can I ask a clerical or a process question? Because as a committee, the whole meeting, I don't think we need detailed minutes, and I don't think we want to have the minutes include any of the questions that we're, that we're, that we're talking about.
Correct.
Everybody in agreement on that?
Yes, I do know.
Can you live with that, the clerk?
Yes, I have my notes and then from there, I am instructed to get rid of that and make it generic.
Okay.
But in case I lost or lowering, I have to have at least something down right there.
Patricia, then Gwen.
On the wrap-up question, there was one that turned out to be very telling, and that is, what would you like to ask us? And when I first saw that question, I thought, huh.
Would you speak in your microphone? I didn't hear the question.
Yeah, the question that was really telling, the last wrap-up question, was what would you like to ask us? And what was impressive about that, instead of what else do we want to know about you, is people asked, you know, what are the key issues, or, you know, or how is something relevant that was relevant going on, being handled? They had good questions. Those candidates who didn't ask those, it was a very telling moment, as to how much they understood about the organization, how much they understood about what was going on. So we might want to add a, what would you like to ask about us in our wrap-up? Or what would you like to ask us? Except for that saying, what would you like to tell us about you?
What do you mean, ask us?
Yeah, ask us. What do you want to ask us?
Gwen?
So listening to everything that we've talked about, it sure seems like we'll be lucky if we each have one question. Because, because the beginning.
Just have a structured and steady focus.
The beginning questions are important. Ty's questions are important, and the wrap-up is important.
Well, you got our, this is the first round.
And it's five minutes each, so five times seven is 35.
You know, you may get through the seven candidates, and you want to say, okay, we want four of them back. You may say, we want two of them back. You may say, well, so-so, but we want to invite some, I mean, you have a lot of people that got some support. So really, it's up to you, but don't get too bogged down on the process, especially the first round. You're going to get a feeling if there's potential, what you're looking for, see if there's a bond between the candidate and the board members, if you think it's successful. You're going to have time to ask more questions on the roll. Like I said, the second round, I would say you should give two-hour time right here. But this is just to kind of get a, get a kind of a general overview.
It's called elimination.
Yeah, this is like the first round. You know, we started off with what, 68 applicants. You got down to the A's and B of maybe 20 of them, I'm just popping it here. You selected seven to interview in the first round. So you are getting kind of nervous about it.
But if we each ask a question and allow five minutes, there's seven of us, that's 35 minutes, and it's a 45-minute interview.
But you're not going to allow five minutes for a question.
You don't allow five minutes for each.
Some question maybe one minute. And another question maybe four. You know, so what you're telling them is you've got 45 minutes to answer X questions.
I think realistically, you'll each get two follow-up questions.
Yeah, I do too.
At best.
Realistically.
Depends on how much they follow up.
Would we want to go category by category and, and see which two questions everybody wants to ask?
We can start there, I think.
It's really important with Gwen, don't get overwhelmed by this process. This is the first round, this is the beginning of the, beginning of the selection process. Because I'll mark my words, you get down on the 29th and 30th, and you're all going to say, I wish I would have asked this, or I wish I had time to follow up on this. And that's where the second round comes in. And that's why I suggest you take notes and write down your follow-up questions or concerns or issues that you have with each candidate. Because you're all going to say, geez, I should have said this, I should have asked this, I'm wondering about this. Because they're going to give you answers, and I know you're going to have follow-up on almost every question, and you can't get sucked into, like I said, you're not going to get through any of the questions. That's why the second round sort of go, well, you don't have that time. And if you want to take two hours, I could take three hours, you can do that.
So we need to just make our.
Yeah, let's look at the opening questions. And I, I heard Melinda suggest just two or three there. I would suggest that we take the one on technology and put that for a second interview. And combine the second and the third question. So what are the priorities and what is the most important responsibility of the county administrator? They ought to be able to talk about that.
And lead on our county-specific.
Are we talking about management style?
Opening.
Chairman was.
Oh, the opening page, okay. Thank you.
I think it's one of the big black pages, to see where we are.
Aye.
So Ty, are you seeing the first one? Start with the first one.
I'll do the opening questions and we'll do.
I'm just doing with the question.
Yeah, we'll ask the first question, combine the second and third question.
Oh, okay.
And then I think probably it's time to move on to the next category.
Yeah, I agree. Can we add one thing to the first question? Because you're saying why you're interested in this position, how does it fit in your long-term career plans?
Because that's part of the question.
That's just the end of the first statement. It says, you know, would you very briefly review your background, what causes you to be interested in this position at this point in your career? How does it fit into your long-term career plans?
Okay, let's go down to the, to the second page, the management style.
Did we make a decision on page one? Because for some reason, I'm not hearing.
Even though the, I'm speaking in the microphone. What I was adding was just a clarification at the end of the first question. Ty's saying question one, and then combine question two and three, skip question four, is what?
And that's on page one?
That's page, on page one.
Okay.
And, and all I did was add a sentence to the first, and that sentence was, and how does it fit into your long-term career plans? Why are you interested, and how does it fit?
I'm looking to see if it's different.
Is that in a sense asking them if they plan to stay or move on?
Exactly.
Is that what you're looking for?
That's exactly right. Without asking it.
Without asking it, okay, great.
So let me restate what I think I heard that you want for the opening. You want that first question, while we've had the opportunity to review the resume, we want them to expand on that, including talk about their long-term career plans. And then we'll combine the second question and the third question. And that's, that, at that point then, we'll turn it over to the next category. Okay? So now we're on management style, and we need two or three questions out of that category.
I personally think we need to ask the question, define integrity. I think that is important.
What, define what?
Integrity.
Integrity.
Define integrity. Yeah, I like the answer that Chet provided for us.
It really is an interesting question that most people do not expect. And it's interesting to see how they react. Like I said, I've had some great answers, and some people just completely peruse that question.
Can we put your name to that, Deb?
Certainly can.
And do you want to combine it with the second one right underneath it? They go together. They go together nicely.
So define question, I mean, combine three and four, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, okay. See another question in that category that somebody thinks is important and would like to ask?
Should we ask them about how they, how well they deal with criticism? Because they're going to get a lot.
I think time management.
You do a good job.
Might be more of an important issue.
Yeah, I had started time management, which is the final bullet.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
And then also I had, I just wonder about how, how approachable.
Okay, so there's three questions. Melinda, would you like to take those two? Or, or one of those two, and then?
Which ones, Melinda?
I'm sorry.
So that was one, two, three, four.
I agree, time management.
Five, 12.5, 12, and 7.8, and 1.9.
Or seven, or seven, if you just add, how do you manage time and set priorities to that question?
What was that?
On, on number seven. Yes, on number seven, if you just add, how do you manage time and set priorities to seven? Just expand that question.
When you're referring to seven, which question?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Motivation is an important part.
Oh, so you're adding to that.
Yeah, I'm just adding to that.
I like the time management question that.
Okay.
Just keep it submission or love nor brought up. That is important.
Yeah, and, and I'm wondering, on that question, how approachable, are you, are you really trying to get at, if you were to ask staff about your communication skills, how would they describe it? Or how, is that really what we're going for?
Communication is, there's a.
I know there is some under there.
It's further down there.
If we just go through this, we can come back, but let's go first, blush, and then see where we are. Because some of these questions are related, they may be later. But if not, I mean, we're going to be here.
So we have two?
We have three, I think. We've got define integrity, and, and then combining that with the ethics, and we have the time management. But I also heard somebody said approachable. You know, we had three questions in this category.
Melinda said.
Melinda was going to do time management. Rick, you do the approachable?
If we get to it.
For now, let's just do that, my suggestion, we go for also, just pick two or three each one on blush, and then let's.
See if we can combine.
See where we are. Because some of them may be addressed later. But just for now, we'll go with these.
Rick, are you okay with that, putting your name down for that?
And who's doing the time management question?
Board relationships.
I think the open meetings, Zach and Robert Throes is really important. We, you know.
Well, it's like I said, we can put that in the contract language.
I would say you should have the second round then.
Second round.
Yeah, I mean, that's more of a topical thing.
I like the fourth question, because it really is an unusual arrangement to.
I do like that one, too.
And, and I like one and two, if you combine them. Underboard relationship. But combine them.
One and two?
Combine, combine two and four, is that what you're saying?
One and, one and two.
Oh, one and two.
Patricia, you want your name by that?
Of course.
Which one, Patricia? One and two or four?
One and two, one and two.
Who would be interested in asking the question about county government in a unique form?
So your names have not been posted.
I know. I can ask the question, I don't know that I feel, you know, knowledgeable on all the issues.
But you're just asking the question.
Sure. But I can ask the question.
These candidates have no idea what you're knowledgeable about. That's not the point, so.
Thank you.
I think.
Melissa, you're going to do the one about county government?
Sure.
I like the last question.
The final question, I think is very important, but I guess it would be, do you think that's a first round or a second round?
I, I would say second round.
Yeah, I would too.
Okay.
We have two questions, that's what we want to see.
Employee relations. Gwen, I'm going to start with you, because you made a comment about this.
Where could I combine? So the last question, I would be interested in, and combining that with, how would you create a team atmosphere? Now, this is an adjunct to a prior question about the fact that we have employees and we have elected officials, and, and that challenge. So this is related to that.
It is, but it's different, because that question is, do we have understanding how it works, where this is more specifically what's working.
This is kind of drilling down on the subject matter.
Right. And are you going to take. Creating and adding, creating a team atmosphere where there is undercutting maybe.
So we'll put Gwen there for the last question. What's another question in this category?
Is she combining something else with that last question?
I'm just adding, creating a team atmosphere where there is dissension or undercutting.
Okay.
Anybody think that the next to the last question is one that we want to ask?
Which question? Well, I was.
Second from bottom.
I'd be interested in knowing whether they've done collective bargaining or union negotiations. But maybe that's a.
I would say that's a second round.
So are we going to know to put them on to a second round if we, if they've never done it? Or do we depend on our team?
Well, I think if you have, if someone has a lot of great skills, you feel comfortable that person can work with employees, the negotiations are a team. Well, I mean, you know, because you've been on it every time I'm here. It's not one person we need to charge it. We all get it and talk about it. That person has to know the political part about what you get. You can't have someone just talking to employees about it and have other labor tracks against them. But I would say that's a second phase interview.
We could combine four and five there.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's a good idea.
Does that make sense, four and five? Who would like to ask that question? Rick, Rick Robbins, okay?
You know, I've done all that stuff.
Are you saying you'd like to ask that question?
Well.
You want it?
I suppose I could if I could have two in the same category. As a manager, I've done all those things.
Okay.
I'm asking, you want it?
Sure.
Okay.
Once again, this is Brad. We'll get, see how many questions this person may have and give them.
Now we're under budget.
I thought it'd be very interesting to know if they have any grant writing experience.
But that's not a primary job of any.
It is not.
Sure, it could be a second interview question.
Or it could be added somewhere.
That was number one, it's pretty simple, but gets to it.
And the question is, if they do have that experience, do they have time to do it?
First question? And we're going to want to know the answer to the first question.
Yeah.
I would say that's a simple but a very important question.
It is. Grant could be a follow-up.
Rick Robbins, you want to ask that first question there?
Sure.
You know, you could add writing grant proposals in that same question.
That's what I'm thinking. That's what I was getting at.
And that would eliminate the question.
It sure would be nice to see if they'd done their homework and read the audits and what they think about our.
I was just going to say that.
Financial position. Melinda, would you want to ask that?
That does kind of give you an insight of what they've done with them.
Yes.
Which question is that one? Number two?
Turn it up from the bottom.
Turn it up from the bottom, okay.
So there we got three there.
Three or two?
Two, two combined. We combined the first one and the grant.
Oh, yes, yes.
So now under leadership.
I have them all.
Yeah, they're all.
Yeah, who doesn't have two questions yet?
Lois doesn't and I don't.
So, yeah, what are the top three leadership qualities?
Yeah, I'd love to hear him talk about that. Lois, you want to ask that one?
Sure.
Everybody comfortable with that?
And there's a question that isn't on here that really goes into leadership, I think. And that's, deals with how have you done, you know, collaboration, developing collaborative relationship and partnerships? I mean, that's something that Chet does so well. And I don't see it precisely in here and I consider that.
That is the fourth question, isn't it?
One, two, three, four. Well, that's methods you use to effectively relate to and work with. That's part of it. If we, I'll take that if we can add in the other part, I think is missing.
I would say so. That, I was looking for that question earlier when this came up. Because that is one of the things I, I liked about that question was the community.
First, could you just kind of.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, just, let's see, so we're doing one, two, three, four. Describe methods you would relate to the work and the. Please. Yeah, give us, give us an example where you have built collaborative relationships.
Who wants to ask that one? Who doesn't have two? Patricia?
Sure.
Good.
Relationship or partnerships.
Partnerships, yeah, partnership and collaborative partnerships.
Yes.
And I'll review these in time.
And I did like the last question too, but that'll probably come out in something, in an answer, I would guess.
Okay, it's more than that, it's building. We want to ask how they're, they're building collaborative partnerships. You did it that way. Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, you'll figure out that.
That's Patricia. I am.
I was going on to the next one. I do like the last question, but I'm thinking that answer will probably come out.
Up in the first, in the first question.
In the answer. Yeah.
If not, it'd be a good follow-up.
Yeah.
So we're on job effectiveness now.
Who doesn't have two questions?
Deb doesn't have two.
I like, I like that category. You know, it's, it's nice to hear somebody's enthusiasm, to hear their engagement in a process and that they, they're proud of what they've accomplished. So it almost seems like one and three could be combined. Name one of your best accomplishments, including where the assignment came from. What type of problems do you most enjoy?
One and one, three?
One and three, yeah.
Who wants that question?
Me.
Lois Bailey.
I think Lois has three questions now, does she not?
You may give up one?
Yeah, and Deb, you've only got one.
Debbie, you've only got one, correct.
You know, Deb, would you, I, I love the question about risk, risk-taking and what's the riskiest question? And that sounds like a question that, that you could ask well.
I have heard that asked in an interview and it's interesting.
It was a compliment.
Thank you, Ty.
I like the communication skills, too.
Well, are you saying you want to have that question presented? What is the riskiest decision you've made? Is that what you're asking?
I think it's a good question because I think it's a good question. I'm only one person.
What if you combine that one and the one right after it, if you like? I mean, I think.
Unpopular decision.
Yeah, risky or unpopular or.
I got my name on it.
Okay.
Which one?
Combine those two.
Combine those two.
I'm not really comfortable the way it's worded. Yeah.
I know when Chat Jack was interviewed, this question was asked of him. And he talked about laying off the budget problem as a charitable.
Remember it very well.
Well, this is quickly review. Darcy, keep track of who have any questions. Okay, so we start from the beginning. I have the first question. And then combining two and three. And Ty, you know, it's correct. Everyone agree?
Yes.
So Ty has two and most people.
So first question, chairman was so.
And then combining two and.
Two and three.
Okay. Next page, management style, combining define integrity. And the next question comes with evidence, so that's Deb. And then the next one is Rick, if you were to ask people what approach they would do. That's Rick. And then we identified the last question about time management, and that's for, you can track, yes, all right. Next page, board relationship. The first one, we're going to combine the first and second one, and that's Patricia. And then the one about county government is a unique form of government, and that's Lois. Employee relationship, combine the second and third from the bottom, and Gwen.
I'm sorry, the second.
And third from the bottom. Describe your experience that you've had at this point and then tell us about time and feedback. And then the last question, who do them, who do.
So it's kind of all.
And adding.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just.
So four and five are combined. And then six stands alone.
And create a team. All right, and then on their budget, Rick is going to do the first one. And we added grant proposals in that area. And once again, I'll read these again.
Sure.
But we have Rick on that one. And then we have Melinda on one, if he researches the county's payoffs office, correct? And on the leadership, the first one is Lois. And then the next one is, we'll describe the methods you'd use effectively and where to add about.
Yeah, building productive collaborative partnerships.
And then job effectiveness, combine.
Do you only have one?
No, I've got two.
No, we, we look over this, you would get this out.
I'm sorry.
And then Lois is going to combine one and three. And then Deb is going to combine four and five. Right? And so what's the payoffs here?
The next two commissioners, Commissioner Bailey has three.
I didn't hear what you said.
Sorry. Commissioner has two, Commissioner Bailey has three. But she was combining, I have her.
Can we consolidate one of her?
Yeah. Move off the county government as a unique form of government.
Well, we can, if we go through rotating and we're not keeping them in categories, then if we don't have time for the third one.
Yeah, all right.
We don't.
Then that's fine.
Could, could we go back to budget a second? And Melinda was going to have the question, have you researched the county's past audit? Could we also combine that with the next question on budget accountability?
You know what, the, the fourth question under board relationships could be combined with what I'm asking.
Kind of the same stuff.
The one that Lois is asking? The county government is a unique form of government, the board of commissioners and others, elect, blah, 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 blah. Have you asked a coworker?
You know, it could be combined, but I think we should keep it separate.
I would say that's a pretty important separate.
Yeah, I do too.
I don't want it lost in the answer of another.
I agree.
Or something.
I agree.
Because would you know why someone could come in here and assume if they have management and city management? Which some of them do. And that, that is what, at least my experience with county commissioners, when they get together, the ones that have county, we're not county commissioners, but start off in city, this is the biggest challenge.
And they don't understand the employer.
Because they're used to being in charge of all the employees. And here, you know, really it's not the case. And I could have some strong feelings about someone that's in the commissioner's office. They may be not of policy, but there's nothing I can do. We have, I won't mention names, but in one case where both the attorney and I strongly recommend to an official that employee be terminated in the county's business, but not part of the authority, this is something we could have done. Because that person's an elected official. Even though we're all on the process and we both strongly recommend that this person be terminated, we have no final authority, no one to use or. So I think that's a very important.
I do too.
Do you think you have enough now to? Is everybody comfortable with giving the power of the pen to Chet and?
And I'll do a grab.
And you can pick one of those and even make it a floating question.
Yeah, well, it's, and once again, it could be that someone will answer one of your questions during a different question. And you're all smart enough, if that happens, you can just skip that question, go on. And so.
Yeah.
Once again, the first round, don't get by town. You're going to have time to. But take notes, never going to read these sheets. Take notes, save them. One of your candidates comes to the second round, you want to keep your notes. And maybe things that you wish you would have followed. You're all going to have follow-up questions, I'll guarantee you that. And you're all going to be tempted, but if you follow up it, you're not going to get too across.
Now, if I may ask, in regards to the follow-up questions, of course, those questions may be different from candidate to candidate. And, and that's okay.
That's perfect.
Is everybody feeling like you have two questions that you are comfortable asking?
Yeah, sure.
All questions are how encouraged during the second round? Or discouraged in the first round? Simple way to look at it.
Yes, Patricia.
I like your administrator review draft. Can you share that, an electronic version?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Because I don't like to take notes, I can't read my own notes. That's why I do it on the computer.
Yeah, well, this is just a tool that you just be on.
But would you give it to me electronically? So I don't have to write.
Well, I'll do is I'll look at these questions, combine them, sort it out.
And the order that we're going to ask the questions?
Yeah, I'll put the names. I assume I hit the same words as all of them.
Everybody comfortable with that? We've got a few minutes.
So wrap up, you're going to do the wrap up.
And the wrap up, yes.
Oh, yes.
Take a look at that and see if there's some we don't want there.
I think those are both important questions.
I mean, the first thing is just a state of, you know, learn right here. You know, just like coming from there.
And then the second one, and then third one, we were talking about changing.
Well, we've got a few minutes to move now to budget update. If we, if we're done with this, I think we are done with this today.
Are we planning to not, do you have a break?
It is five minutes.
Oh, okay, is it?
So, you know, we have both gone the budget process. So there's no rush, you're done by close, it's good. Jared will go through all of those. Meanwhile, Stephanie went back this morning, we had to, Jennifer, after her world war trip, or world.
World win.
World win festival, I think, today. And get through that sort of, but we could start, these are some issues, I think, even at the first meeting, we don't have the budget books done, I think we will. There's things you have to discuss that we've got to look at more, like the H V C and so forth. And so if you look at the memo that I passed out at the budget meeting, go through those. And if you could just highlight the questions you really want to answer or the people you want to present. You don't do it right now, but at some point, I'm guessing we're going to, you want to talk about the H V C here. You're going to talk about the capital improvement plan, I hope projects. Fortunately, we don't have a lot of new requests from department heads. Outside of talking about potential, either hire or partnership, I'll call the campus service director. There's no budget, there's no personnel across so many. So I think we could accomplish, Ty is going to keep it with meetings, kind of streamlined. I'll look at that memo I passed out at first meeting and see what are your priorities in that memo. I try to outline the unique things and you should be aware about in the 2023 budget. So that'd be helpful if you just look at that. I mean, that'll help us plan our agendas. Whether we have a final version of the budget book or not, you have to deal with those issues anyway. So let's start and make our time.
So you're asking that we all send you some feedback?
Yeah, if you just look at that memo, and if you don't have, I, I passed out last time, look at it. But just pick your top five or what, the ones that you think are really relevant, you had, at all, you need to have down. And at some point, we'll go through those in the schedule. Well, there's some things that maybe all, it's not, we don't want to do this. Or, yeah, just put it in the budget review dialogue. It's really up to you, but the more advanced work all you can do, the quicker we'll get through this process.
So I'm trying to figure out which memo you were talking about. I've got the capital improvement plan stuff.
Yeah, that one. Okay.
I'll clip together. May July 29th, I'll look for it again. I must have.
I passed it out along with. If you don't have it, I can.
Why don't, why don't you send us all?
All right, I'll send everyone. I think it's beautiful process.
We won't let Gwen feel special.
I found it.
Any, any other questions on, on this budget process for Chet or, or Darcy or Jared? Well, I think it's been a.